Through force, we will make you safe. That's the name of the article. And it has this great meme, right? It says licensing when government takes away your right to do something and sells it back to you. This defending Utah broadcast is brought to you in part by K-Talk Radio AM 1640, Black Lotus Web Development, blacklotuswebdev.com. The United States Constitution made easy to understand by Dr. Lonnie Crockett, available at the Defending Utah Liberty Store. Shim Financial Services, 801-856-6151. Trust Plumbing, 801-808-5470. Higher Calling Firearms, highercallingfirearms.com. Pioneer Family Scholars, American Appliance, 801-254-2566. And Anderson Accounting, 801-225-0396.
It's a fact, more photos of you are being taken than ever before. Are you ashamed of your smile? At last, a new technology that gives a brighter and healthier smile in under two hours. And it's fully warranted, so you'll never have to worry about your smile again. Call Dr. Jeremy Thompson at Thompson Dental, 801-254-0835. Or visit gonewsmile.com. And we'll show you how you can restore your faded, yellowed, or worn teeth without surgery, crowns, or implants. And it's backed by a 30-day, 100% satisfaction money-back guarantee. This scientific breakthrough will painlessly transform your appearance in one visit. The smile you've been waiting for will never cost less, or look brighter than it will today. Call 801-254-0835, or visit gonewsmile.com. That's G-O-N-U-smile.com. To revitalize your smile, new smile, it looks good on you.
Good Freedom Friday. This is Ben McLintock from defendingutah.org, where we think right and wrong, not right and left. I am really excited to have on our next guest from The Petroglyph. Thepetroglyph.com is the website. It's a great news website. Again, kind of like the defending Utah, focusing on more local politics, things that are going on that do focus and affect the entire state of Utah. But kind of talk a lot about a lot of the lands issues and things that are happening, especially in southern Utah because of all of the so-called public lands and national parks and whatnot. And so from The Petroglyph, we are joined by Monty Wells. Monty, thank you for joining us.
Hey, thanks for having me.
So there's a couple of articles I wanted to have you on to talk about. And I think they lead into each other. The first one is your article at thepetroglyph.com. And that's including the word "the," so it's thepetroglyph.com. Is through force, we will make you safe. That's the name of the article. And it has this great meme, right? It says licensing when government takes away your right to do something and sells it back to you. I just think that's just perfect. And so kind of give us some background. So there was a, what's that called? A statute that the commissioners were voting on to start to require every business to be licensed. So in big cities, this seems pretty wild, like not every business was required to have a license?
Yeah. I'm not sure how, did you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure how it was in the county. In the city, you know, everything was licensed except for some home businesses. Last year, the state passed a thing that then required them to do it. But in the county, I don't know what it was for. All I know is that they came, economic development person for the county, along with one of the county HR guy, came with this proposal to require all the businesses in San Juan County to register and be licensed. That's how I found out about it.
What was their reason behind that? What was their state, like, why were they pushing it? Was there like a big problem with all these unlicensed businesses raging and pillaging people?
No. No, not that I'm aware of. You know, basically, I think it boils down to money, but...
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know what it was. I mean, just all of a sudden this comes out and they're talking about, you know, the health and safety and welfare of the county and the people to make sure everybody's safe. And the businesses are doing what they're supposed to, as if the government knows what a business is supposed to do.
Right, right.
But that was the reasoning they gave is for the safety and welfare, you know? That's always the key words.
So if you're against business licensing, you're against safety and...
Yeah, exactly. But they luckily, I guess, several people spoke out against it at the commission meeting and stuff, and they tabled it for now, so...
Oh, that's good. I think it's...
Maybe we'll...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just saying, maybe we'll get a win out of this, maybe.
Yeah, that would be great. I think there's, you know, a lot of, your article really lays out the reason of why. And one of the, I'd like you to kind of discuss why licensing is not necessary and why it actually is bad and detrimental. But I'm really glad you got this quote from Joseph Smith. When he was the mayor of Nauvoo, the idea of business licenses isn't new. And the city of Nauvoo in the 1830s and 1840s had licenses. And so Joseph, as mayor, spoke and he said, I'll read the quote, he says, "I also spoke at length for the repeal of the ordinance of city licensing merchants, hawkers, taverns, and ordinaries, desiring that this might be a free people and enjoy equal rights and privileges." And the ordinances were repealed. And so he recognized that licensing businesses made it so you weren't a free people and that you didn't have equal rights and privileges when the government requires that you get permission from them to be able to sustain yourself.
Yep. Yeah, and it opens up a whole door to where the government can go in and do their monopolization of any kind of industry within their area, be it a city or a county. They can dictate who has business and who doesn't by just that license.
You've signed a contract with them where you basically are agreeing to lose all of your rights. My regular co-host, Micah Turner, he owns an automobile repair shop. And we had, he had the fire marshal come in and starting to look around his office. And he was like, hey, you don't have a warrant to do this. You need to search my office. You need a warrant. And the guy said, well, it's not a search, it's an inspection, as if there was a difference.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, it's crazy. I don't know how they, it's never made sense to me. I refused to pay it one year on my business here, just to see what would happen, because I was tired of paying them a fee for nothing. I mean, you get nothing out of it. You're just paying them to, so they allow you to breathe, you know? And try to make money so that you can pay taxes to them. But they sent me a nasty letter threatening me with a $1,000 fine, time in jail. It was a misdemeanor to not pay my licensing fee, which I thought was interesting.
Yeah.
You know? So we criminalize people that are trying to make a living, but luckily, my business falls under the one that the state made exempt now.
Oh, good.
So I was happy about that. But I'd like to see the whole county go to where there's no business licenses.
Sure. Well, under this one, they would, you wouldn't be required by the state, but the county would require you to get a license, right?
Yeah, well, one of the questions they brought up was how are they going to deal with what the state has put out? You know? Because they want to do everybody, but they know that certain businesses aren't required. And that in itself is sort of crazy, that one business doesn't have to get it and another business has to.
Well, don't you know that some animals are more equal than others?
Yeah, exactly. And some have to pay more because they're doing better, you know? They're the ones that need to pay the most.
Got to pay your fair share, like any good Marxist would say.
Yep. All for the greater good.
So what are some of the big issues that you find very problematic and the problems with having licenses, business licenses?
Well, the biggest one I see, you know, first place, as I'm concerned, is just legalized theft, because you're being forced to do it. If you don't do it, they're going to use force to throw you in jail. I mean, to charge you with a crime, make you a criminal. And that in itself is just not right. The other part is, is that I've seen it time and time again down here, where they'll make you licensed, you know? And like I was the only GIS company pretty much in San Juan County. But once I started being political, even though I'm licensed, the city won't do business with me, the county won't do business with me. You know, they go out of the county to do business with like Jones and the Mill and other companies, instead of having it all done local. And they do that all the time with other things. And that's one of the other problems I see, is that you don't get anything for it. And then they can dictate who does business with you and who doesn't, you know?
Right.
They want to give you a hassle, they can give you a hassle.
It's just outrageous that you'd have to get permission from the government to feed your family.
Exactly. And most small businesses, you know, I mean, you're not making any money where you can afford to have an attorney on staff that you can fight all this crap. You just sort of have to do your best and hope they don't get you in their crosshairs.
Kind of like dealing with the mafia, it's just the price of doing business.
Exactly. It's an extortion fee is what it is. It's legalized extortion.
Yeah.
And I don't like any of it.
You don't like being extorted, man? You're such an extremist.
I know.
Well, we got some callers that want to ask some questions. Let's go to the phone lines real quick. If you want to be a part of the conversation, give us a call at 801-254-1640. Line five, you're on K-Talk with Monty Wells from The Petroglyph.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Eagle.
Oh, yeah. Listen, I probably told you this before, but you guys are back on the subject. Deep state of Utah. When I got back from Vietnam in 69, I got introduced to the local deep state here in Utah. And it is alive and real. And this Governor Herbert, I never knew him at that time, but he's got all the markings of what we call, and that day when I was part of the team, we were chain agents. And, you know, it was to develop an attitude in the public about which way the establishment in Utah wants us to go. So it's alive and well today, and I suspect that Herbert is right at the top of the pile of...
All of his actions go in that direction. I appreciate it. And of course, it's kind of going back on topic, it's the deep state that is pushing a lot of these things. It is the conspiracy that wants to control all of our lives. And doing business licenses is a great way to control the people. Let's go to, again, the phone lines. You're on K-Talk, and we've got Monty Wells from The Petroglyph. Caller.
Yeah, Eagle, you know, cut off. You asked about all of his actions. No, no, I wouldn't say that all of his actions, because oftentimes, they'll do the right thing to cover their tracks and throw people off them, you know?
Sure. Oh, absolutely, yeah. Okay, thanks, Eagle.
Thank you.
So, Monty, kind of going to, I think these are connected, your next, the next article, one of the newest article on your website about, and I'm going to probably butcher the guy's name, Commissioner Gray Eyes and Mary Boyz.
Yeah, Gray Eyes and Mary Boy.
And so they have a Stephen Boos that authors a lot of the things that they introduce to be voted on by the commission. Is this the same, did he also do the legislation with licensing?
No, that was, as far as I know, that was done by Walter Byrd, who works for the county.
Okay, gotcha. So he's got to justify his existence through coming up with new laws to pass.
Yeah, yeah, absurd laws. You know, the other part about, you know, so you got your business licenses, and then they hit up businesses for like your TRT tax, you know? Which raises all the, you know, anybody comes to stay in San Juan County, I think they're paying something like 12% tax to stay at a hotel because of your TRT and everything else.
Right.
And then you got your economic development, you know, within Utah and everything that is all government ran that thinks they can run businesses. And they're always requiring something. And that comes out of taxes, you know? So I mean, the business is just, yeah, if they could run a business, they wouldn't be working for the government, you know?
That's for sure. That's been proven.
They might be, because they're too lazy or something, I don't know. I used to work for the government too. It's a good gig.
Yeah, it's, you know, you can't get fired.
No, no, I mean, yeah, you make good money and good benefits.
Well, as long as you don't rock the boat, you can't get fired, I guess, I should say.
Yeah, and in San Juan County, you can rock the boat and still not get fired.
Well, I've heard that...
You can steal the boat.
You can steal, as long as, yeah, as long as you're part of it. Because I've heard that some of them, you know, if you rock the wrong boat, some of these folks will resort to, you know, not giving you contracts for your business and kind of hurting your business.
Well, yeah, they're taking them away.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a contract with the county for five years, and when I started rocking the boat against Commissioner Adams, that's what happened. Of course, then they come out and tell you weren't doing your job, and, you know, and just all this crap. And even though you go in and show that you were, it doesn't matter, you know? You still don't get the contract.
Right, they just have to make up something to go along with it. So we've got...
Yeah, but...
Go ahead, sorry.
But back to Boos or Boos or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, he's an attorney out of Colorado that works for the Navajo tribe for a long time, worked with Commissioner Mary Boy and Gray Eyes when they were representatives within the tribal government. They still are representatives in tribal government. And he's taken them on, so he says it's pro bono, but he's defended, he's the one that was the attorney for Gray Eyes in the lawsuit, the federal lawsuit. When the county removed Gray Eyes from the ballot, because he lives in Arizona and not Utah, the county removed him and he filed a lawsuit in federal court.
So that's amazing. So in the state of Utah, you don't have to live in the district that you're running to represent. For example, Ben McAdams doesn't live in the fourth congressional district. And so, but I thought that you had to live in the same state at least. But that doesn't seem to be the case.
It doesn't, it's not the case when you're Native American and you play that card constantly.
Accusing everybody that's against you as being a racist.
Yeah, and that, you know, his placenta, when he was born, he buried his placenta in Utah.
What's that got to do with where you live? So if I go bury something in California, I can run for office there?
I guess, according to Judge Newfer and according to our district judge here, I guess you can.
Wow.
So, yeah, and of course, you know...
Monty, we've got to go to a break. Let's hold off on this, and if you can hold on to the commercial and we'll talk about it some more.
You bet.
Okay, hey, thanks a lot. We've got Monty Wells from The Petroglyph. Thepetroglyph.com is the website. You can read more about this, he's got some audio on this. And we'll get more into it when we get back from the break, right here on K-Talk AM 1640. This defending Utah broadcast is brought to you in part by K-Talk Radio AM 1640, Black Lotus Web Development, blacklotuswebdev.com. The United States Constitution made easy to understand by Dr. Lonnie Crockett, available at the Defending Utah Liberty Store. Shim Financial Services, 801-856-6151. Trust Plumbing, 801-808-5470. Higher Calling Firearms, highercallingfirearms.com. Pioneer Family Scholars, American Appliance, 801-254-2566. And Anderson Accounting, 801-225-0396.
It's a fact, more photos of you are being taken than ever before. Are you ashamed of your smile? At last, a new technology that gives a brighter and healthier smile in under two hours. And it's fully warranted, so you'll never have to worry about your smile again. Call Dr. Jeremy Thompson at Thompson Dental, 801-254-0835. Or visit gonewsmile.com. And we'll show you how you can restore your faded, yellowed, or worn teeth without surgery, crowns, or implants. And it's backed by a 30-day, 100% satisfaction money-back guarantee. This scientific breakthrough will painlessly transform your appearance in one visit. The smile you've been waiting for will never cost less, or look brighter than it will today. Call 801-254-0835, or visit gonewsmile.com. That's G-O-N-U-smile.com. To revitalize your smile, new smile, it looks good on you.
Welcome back to the Defending Utah radio program, right here on K-Talk 1640. It is March 29th, and it is 10:43 in the morning. We've been speaking with Monty Wells from The Petroglyph at thepetroglyph.com. He's got some great articles, and I really recommend you go to his, that website, and because it's not just about things that are happening there in the county, but they actually have a big impact across the state. And as we were going to the break, we were talking about how one of the commissioners, Gray Eyes, actually doesn't even live in the state of Utah, but is allowed to represent the people of San Juan County on the county commissioner's seat. Thanks for joining us, Monty.
You bet. Yeah, it's an interesting thing. I didn't think I'd ever live to see it, but I guess I have.
It's interesting how the things that we never think we'd see, and then we end up seeing it, it's, we're always surprised by what it is. But this article, Commissioner Gray Eyes and Mary Boyz, Conflict of Interest and Collusion at thepetroglyph.com. It's got some good clips, and right now, we're having some technical difficulties, otherwise I'd play some of them. But I encourage our listeners to go to the website and listen to the testimony and response of some of the individuals that are, you know, calling out the commissioners. And you talked about how with the lawsuit to be allowed to stay as a commissioner, even though he doesn't even live, not only does he not live in San Juan County, he doesn't even live in the state of Utah. But he played the race card, yet if you're against him, that means you're a racist. He did this in this county commissioner meeting, when somebody was saying, you know, asking him who introduced these things to be voted on, and he tried to play that racist card there. Tell us about that.
Yeah, that was actually Mary Boy.
Oh, that was, okay.
And Mary Boy's been our commissioner before, and then he was voted out, and he got back in unfortunately, with this new district team. But, yeah, you know, he didn't want to answer the question. And the only question they were asking is who is involved with putting together all these resolutions that Mary Boy and Gray Eyes keep presenting, that contradict everything the county stood for for years down here? And they want, he wouldn't answer. He said, "I don't have to tell you." Was one of his responses one time, and then the next time, he said to the same person, asking him again, that he told her that her question implies that he's too, because he's a Native American, because they're Native Americans are too stupid to write these resolutions. And she tried to tell him, no, that's not the case, I just want to know who's doing it. And he shut her off, because that's...
Well, that means, so is he admitting that he's stupid? Because he didn't, it's pretty obvious that he didn't do it.
Yeah, yeah, so that was just last, oh, I don't know, two meetings ago. And then just last week, we got a letter from his supposed attorney, that's Boos or Boz, or whatever his last name is, B-O-O-S, that says, yeah, he offered them all, after meeting with both attorneys and talking about all these issues, which violates open meeting laws.
Right.
For the commissioners to meet together with this attorney. So they did that, then this guy wrote up all these resolutions, and then they come and get them passed. And since it's a three-panel commission, they don't have any problem passing them. And the other, you know, the other part of the problem is, is that Boz, or Boos, he also is the legal counsel for the Navajo tribe that filed the federal lawsuit about the voting district. So he's representing the Navajo tribe, and that case is before the 10th Circuit Court now of Appeals. And also, he's representing two of the county commissioners, which is a total conflict of interest.
Right.
And now he's working towards getting a resolution passed to sue our county prosecutor and to get him removed from office. Because he doesn't like what the county prosecutor's doing. Basically, this Boz is just running wild. And then if anybody, you know, stands up, like you said, then you're an instant racist, which I'm proud to wear the shirt. You know? Because I know or not, it's all about what's right and wrong, you know?
Exactly, yeah. They just come up with names. We talked in the first hour, I know you weren't listening because you were in a meeting, but they're actually trained to call people that oppose government programs cave people, citizens against virtually everything. So if they can't call you a racist, they'll call you a cave person. They've got some kind of epithet to call you, no matter what.
Oh, exactly. And they like always, they can't do that to me, then they say, boy, you need to get an education, you know, your writing's terrible. Well, I can understand it, you know?
Wow.
Yeah, they like to come out and throw those cards around, which just makes me laugh. But this thing is just getting out of hand down here. We've got major collusion, you know, and a very big conflict of interest, which violates this Stephen C. boss, Boz, I don't know how to say his name. Anyway, you know, he's violating...
We'll just call him Boos.
Yeah, Boos, exactly. And he's violating state law. I mean, the Utah, the bar, there's a code in there, I think it's Rule Number 1.7, talks about this conflict of interest with concurrent clients. And that's what he's got. He's got Navajo tribe that he's representing, he's representing two commissioners, which is totally illegal, totally illegal. And yet, if you go to try to get anybody to do anything, I mean, I don't know what you have to do to get Spencer Cox off his ass, to do anything about voting or anything else, but it ain't going to happen. He's so busy going to ballgames, and he don't care about it.
Oh, you know, he grew up in rural Utah County, I mean, in rural Utah, so he loves the ranchers.
Oh, yeah, he really does.
He loves to shaft them, that's for sure.
He wouldn't even show up for the cases, the voting cases, you know? He's over the state's voting, the lieutenant governor is.
Yep.
He didn't even show up to the federal court hearing on it. That's how much he cares about it. And we can't get him to do anything. We can't get anybody else to look at even any of these criminal acts that they're doing. I mean, I've got another story going to be coming out here shortly, that, you know, I documented how Mary Boy, he goes over and he goes to Farmington to a meeting and charges gas on the county credit card, and then comes back and turns in a reimbursement form, and gets reimbursed.
For something he didn't even buy? Wow, that's...
Yeah, that the county already paid.
Wow.
You know, there is, I think the chief of police up there somewhere up on the Los Habsburg, got fired for doing that.
Yeah, Bo Babka, we've had him on the program. How does your local sheriff not just arrest him?
I have no idea. I don't know why our local prosecutor or the sheriff don't do something.
That's outrageous.
You know, I mean, this is retarded.
Oh, we're...
I'm sorry, I don't want to be a...
We're not very PC today, but I said the word earlier today. But it's, because it's infuriating, it's pretty ridiculous that they would be doing this. And I was just thinking, earlier, how are these guys getting elected? Is San Juan County just extremely liberal? Is it just, is it a majority Indian? Or what's going on?
Well, San Juan County, according to the theory, from what I've looked at, you know, the majority of the people, I think it's like 52% are Native American.
So it's a little bit, okay, it's just over the majority, okay?
Right, but in 1984, the federal government stepped in because the tribe filed a lawsuit saying that natives couldn't vote right. And so they districted the county, so they made three districts. And if you live in one district, you can only vote for that commissioner from that district. You can't vote for all three, it's not an open county vote.
Like a legislative district type of thing, but within the county?
Yeah. And so you got three county commissioners that spend your money, but you're only represented and you can only vote for one. Well, then Judge Shelby, which is an outstanding federal judge, has the federal case on the voting rights, you know, this voting right thing. He comes out and says, oh, what San Juan County's doing is illegal. Well, it was the federal government that could set it up.
Right, right.
And it's supposed to be under the operation of the Department of Justice. Well, Judge Shelby ignores all that, blames San Juan County, the media blames San Juan County. So he comes in, and he gerrymanders out new districts that give two of the districts to Native Americans from the reservations, from the reservations.
Right.
He stacks them so that, I mean, that's who's going to get elected. And then there's one district... And then there's one district that's left up to the rest of the county. And so because of that, that's how we ended up, with Mary Boy back in office and Gray Eyes.
That sounds exactly what's going to be happening now when Prop 4 gets implemented with these so-called independent commissions and judges are going to be deciding the districts all over the state.
If that's what they're doing, that's what exactly is going to happen. They're just gerrymandering to what they want to have the outcome. And that's all Shelby did.
Wow.
And that was, you know, that case is the one that this Boz is the legal counsel for the tribe against the county. So when they set that up, that these two guys get elected by, you know, a few people, and the rest of us don't even have a say on it, the way they divided it up. They split up the largest town in San Juan County, Blandy, put it in three different districts.
Wow.
And split the population. And not one commissioner comes from that area.
Wow, that's just crazy.
Yeah, it is. But like you say, I mean, you start talking about gerrymandering, and of course Judge Shelby said, "What we're doing is constitutional." And I'm not sure what constitution he's looking at, but it's not constitutional far as our constitution.
Yeah.
But they get away with it. I mean, there's... I don't... It's a mess.
Exactly. We've got some callers that want to ask a question. Let's go to line five, you're on K-Talk.
I just wonder if Shawna Cox is down there, because she's a Fireball.
Monty, do you know Shawna? And is she in the... Is she working in the area with you?
Who is that again? I didn't hear.
Shawna Cox, she was asking about Shawna Cox.
I haven't seen anything of her down here.
Okay. Because she was in Kanab, but that's a different...
Right, that's across the...
Yeah, okay.
Across the Colorado, which is quite a way... I mean, it's close distance if you flew, but...
Yeah, yeah, it's how the geography is out there. It's not exactly like, you know, just running down the street.
It's like four and a half hours.
Gotcha, gotcha.
The drive there.
Yeah, people, you know, it's kind of like, across the country, people don't realize, you know, in big cities like in San Francisco and New York, don't understand the, you know, the heartland of the country. The same thing in Utah. A lot of the folks in Salt Lake don't understand what's going on down there in southwestern Utah and how it's really a completely different atmosphere.
Yeah, the problem, you know, the biggest issue here is that the media doesn't cover it.
Right.
Media has their talking points, and it's usually what the government wants everybody to know.
Exactly.
And so the people get fed a bunch of malarkey and don't even understand what's happening.
Yep.
It has nothing to do with racism. I mean, you look back at when the settlers came in, there was some early issues. The settlers, the Mormon pioneers here, went to the state and said, "Okay, let's give this more of the Navajo Strip that's in Utah to the Navajo. Hopefully, that'll solve some of this problem." And that's how they got it.
Yeah.
Because they said, "Let's just give it to them." And they did. I mean, there has not been all this crap that, you know, just a few might...